Good morning, everyone. We're back from executive session. So can I have a first and a second to reopen and re-enter the open session of our agenda today?
So moved. Can we reduce the feedback up here?
Can I?
Second.
So you're a first and you're a second. Okay. So moved. All right. I'm going to ask Dawn Thomas, LCDA Director, to come forward to discuss an exciting topic of matters surrounding the development and urban renewal project. And Dawn, good morning.
Good morning. Just wanted to introduce this project to the board. And we have a little time constraint. Barry Long is on the Zoom. I know you have had an opportunity to see what's being presented, but Barry and the development team from J. Petroselli Inc. has been working, have been working together to make this project what you see today. We're going to just go a little bit about out of order. And the presentation is going to come after, but Barry's just going to comment publicly on how he sees things evolving. But I just, this is, and I'll just back up a little bit. This is our town square project. Barry, after the pattern book, worked with us on the design of the town square in a big public engagement process that resulted in a preliminary design. Mr. Petroselli thereafter, of his own accord, took it upon himself to take that to the next level and see if he could make it work financially and actually do the development. And that's what you're seeing here today, that presentation. And it looks pretty amazing, and I know you've seen it. So I'll let Barry go from here.
Good morning, Barry.
Thank you. Good morning Supervisor and Council members. And appreciate your inviting us this morning and going out of order. But I actually think this order is going to work well for you because I'm going to set the table a little bit for what you're going to see in just a minute. So we've had the real privilege of working for the town almost, for almost three years now. First through the pattern book process, then on the town square. And now we just work in support of the town, helping to vet the various development proposals that are coming forward. And it's been a wonderful relationship. And we do know our role is in support of the town. We're not working for the developers, and we are not the town. Ultimately, all of these things that come before you are at your full discretion. Big picture, the, if we go back, take just a quick step back to the pattern book process, and out of that came the recommendation for the town square. Three years ago, we had no idea where it was going to go. There was a blight on Main Street. And we've taken one step at a time and figured it out with you as we've moved forward. So fast forward to today, we know where the town square is going to go. You've acquired the buildings, you've demolished them. You've opened up the corridor to connect Main Street to the riverfront, and you've created the opportunity. It's just remarkable what the town's been able to do in a very short period of time. However, we haven't met all of our objectives. Our real objective is to create an activated town center, which is a catalyst for the future health of downtown. And you have a wonderful downtown, but we know we can make it even better. And there was broad support from the residents and the elected officials to create a town square, to activate the riverfront, to connect Main Street to the riverfront. And the project you're going to be talking about today does all of those things. We've had an opportunity to not work for, but provide comments to Mr. Petroselli, his development team, and his architect as they've developed this proposal. It's moved very quickly. We appreciate that they've evolved the design in response to the town's comments. We believe it's a solid proposal. It considers projected sea level rise, which is very important for any new project. We think that the uses are dead on. They're going to talk about a hotel. We like that that's discretionary income that can be spent right in the heart of the downtown to help support the businesses. They're talking about a way forward on creating the town square connection, creating the wonderful connection to the riverfront, activating the riverfront, creating park space for all residents and other elements, which I'll let them share. This idea of activation is dead on, and we really appreciate how far they've come. We would also say the devil is in the details, as you know. And, but the perfect is the enemy of the good. And this is a really good proposal, and they keep working to try to perfect it. There's more work that has to take place going forward. We've worked with your BIDMA. BIDMA is really important in Riverhead related to staging events. This is an event area. They're going to need to be involved. Obviously, Landmarks Preservation Committee will want to weigh in. Town Board will want to weigh in. It's got a ways to go, and the public is going to weigh in. But we just wanted to tell you that in our professional opinion, working in support of you, that this is at its core, a very solid proposal. They've thought comprehensively about the issues. They've thought about a long-term parking strategy. And we really appreciate, I think, just what a good dialogue it's been with the development team. And I'll let them speak for themselves. I don't want to give away their story. But they've come through with a solid proposal, and we believe that it's worth consideration by the town.
Barry, so the public is aware of who you are. Can you just describe what UDA is?
I don't even think I introduced myself.
If you're just coming in and somebody probably just turned in and don't know who you are, could you just give us a little description of your input and how you came about?
Sure. So our firm, UDA, we responded to a proposal to work through a community engagement process with the town. Urban Design Associates has been in business for almost 60 years now. I'm the president of the company. We're located in Pennsylvania, but I'm from New York originally. And we work all over the country, helping towns on projects just like this. I'm going to say downtown revitalization, but I love your downtown. I think it's just, I think we see it as in, it's a wonderful downtown. We're just trying to make it better. And we did that through a process of working with the community, working with your boards and commissions, working with the elected officials. And the pattern book really set the guidelines for future design in downtown. I think that was an important step forwards because we listened to what residents said. It's not our opinion, it's what we heard. But then, subsequent to that, we worked on the town square idea, again, through a community engagement process that led to a grant that you've now received, which is wonderful. And we both worked with both your planning folks and with Dawn Thomas and her team later subsequently. And we just, our expertise is in urban design and making places better. I mean, and turning on the lights, activating things. And we have a, I think, kind of a clear view of Riverhead because we're not, we can see the forest for the trees because we're not in the middle of the forest. So I'm giving you a high-level view of how we see your downtown. But we love your town, and we think the things that are happening are wonderful.
Great. Thank you, Barry.
Thanks, Barry.
Thank you Supervisor.
Thank you.
And Council members. Very nice to see you today.
Likewise.
Likewise.
So Dawn, what's next?
So we can go ahead and introduce the development team to discuss the project.
Okay.
So I think maybe actually before that, Kevin Grimes is your consultant for the financial structure of this, and he may want to just quickly say a couple.
All right. Kevin?
Good morning. Kevin Grimes, National Development Council. NDC is a national nonprofit economic development advisory firm. We've been in business for a little over 50 years. We work exclusively on behalf of municipalities to help get their prioritized projects done by figuring out a creative capital structure, attracting additional sources of capital. And then also, what we're often asked to do is to right-size a public incentive package to create financial feasibility, but appropriately size that so that it is sized just to establish financial feasibility. Because what we have done over the last few, several decades, is create a whole series of subsidiaries. So we have a development company that does public facilities. We have a lending arm that does small business lending. We have an equity arm that invests in properties in exchange for tax credits. So essentially, what we look to do on behalf of our municipal clients is to use our experience as a developer, as a lender, as an investor, and look at these complex transformational, mixed-use, mixed-income, placemaking developments as an opportunity to get them done. But also look at it from the perspective of the private investment community, the developers, the community, as well as the municipality. So this is not an easy financial structure because there are a lot of weaker elements of it. But the weaker elements of it is very important for the placemaking. So we're here to work on your behalf to get Town Square, your TOD development, done well using a variety of financial resources based upon all the upfront planning that has been done for this. And as Barry mentioned, he's not working on, he's not part of the town. He's not part of the development team. But that's on the design end. So that from a financial end, we're not part of the town. We're not part of the development team. But we're trying to advise the town to come up with a financial structure that works to create financial feasibility. But there are quite a few public resources that will be necessary for that to happen. So look forward to answering any of your questions and working with you as this allows.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
So Eric Russo is counsel to J. Petroselli Inc., so he's going to go ahead and take it over from here.
Good morning, Madam Supervisor and members of the Town Board. It's my pleasure to be here before you today to discuss the project known as the Riverhead Town Square that we, our team, which is members of J. Petroselli Development Associates, is putting forward to you and has been working with your team on the town side, Ms. Thomas, et cetera, to come forward with the plan that's before you today for your consideration. As indicated, I am Eric Russo, the Embranche Suiak in Russo. My office is in Seville, and I am the project attorney. With me also today to assist with the presentation is Joseph Petroselli of J. Petroselli Development Associates, Andrew Jambertone, who is our architectural firm, Jambertone and Associates, David Wortman from VHB Engineering, as well as Brian DeLuca and Stephen Schogar, who are part of the J. Petroselli Development Team and help us with our downtown projects here in Riverhead and has been working with Petroselli Development for many years. We are here today to request that you seek and designate J. Petroselli Development Associates as a qualified eligible sponsor under New York State Urban Renewal Law and a master developer for the Riverhead Town Square project. Our client views the Riverhead Town Square project as a continuation of its significant role to improve the downtown urban renewal area on Main Street with its commitment to multi-phased urban renewal development that started back in 1997 when they first came forward with a proposal and a commitment to a multi-phased urban renewal as to acquisition and planning and completion of the Long Island Aquarium and continued with the construction and completion of the Hyatt Place East End Hotel, the Sea Star Ballroom, Treasure Cove Marina, and related parking, as well as the Preston House and Hotel and the historic renovation of buildings known as the Preston House, I'm sorry, the Howell House, the Preston House, and the East End Lawn House. J. Petroselli Development Associates, who are making the proposal today, has over 60 years as an industry leader in varied construction and building projects throughout Long Island, in Riverhead Town, as well as New York City. Petroselli's proposal that we present to you today will create and develop a very significant symbiotic relationship between the East Main Street and the Peconic Riverfront in downtown Riverhead, creating a diverse gathering place for all to enjoy, whether it's residents or visitors who come to Riverhead Town. This project will be an essential part of the revitalization of the downtown Riverhead area. In the planning and development of the project, J. Petroselli Development Associates utilized, as was mentioned earlier, the concept renderings created by Riverhead Town's consultant Barry Long of Urban Design Associates. They also looked at the various elements of the downtown Riverhead pattern book, which was referenced with the input of the residents here in the town in order to develop that document. And they also evaluated current market studies. It is the plan by J. Petroselli Development Associates for this project to create a town square, which will be the center of activity for this diverse population that we anticipate to come or that presently exists here in our township or your township. There is proposed an 80-room boutique hotel for visitors, parking in conjunction with the proposed town parking that would be necessary, retail shops facing the town square, restaurant bar with rooftop access, a firehouse museum paying homage to the original firehouse known as the Washington Engine Company Number Two, dating back to 1861, which will be a free attraction to the public. There'll be a communal workspace available to the West Side Building overlooking the town square. There will also be created condominiums with affordable pricing and parking in terms of pedestal parking underneath the proposed building. There'll be playground space available for children of all ages, including toddlers and babies. There'll be a proposed and created amphitheater along the Riverwalk. There will be interactive games as ping pong, giant chess, checkers, musical elements, and cornhole. There'll be a boathouse discovery center also within the project, as well as safe access to the Peconic River for boating. There'll be restrooms and marine bulkhead that will be created, as well as the further beautification of the downtown area with a large fountain, pavers, pathways, turf, landscaping, trees, potted plants, seating, shade structures, very unique lighting, public artwork, and seasonal holiday decorations. The town square will also, and has given consideration in its design, to address and mitigate flooding issues and provide a view of the Peconic River, relocating and shifting parking that is presently on the waterfront to another area within the town and also participate with the Riverhead Town Parking District. It will be a vibrant town square that we anticipate retaining existing businesses and attracting new businesses and reducing vacancies that presently exist in the downtown area. It will be incorporating your natural asset of the Peconic River, as I indicated, for boating, paddling, and other water activities. It will create a concentration of cultural and arts attractions with the East End Arts to utilize the new outdoor amphitheater that's proposed along the Riverwalk. It will have a unique activation of interactive elements as well. In our opinion, it will provide long-term economic growth for the town of Riverhead, the East End, and Suffolk County as a whole. We will create further ADA pedestrian connectivity from Main Street to Riverwalk, and we will seek to improve the quality of life through this project for the town residents. It will also have, as I mentioned, affordable condominium unit ownership for town residents or those seeking to possibly purchase a residence in the condominium that's proposed. There will be job creation. We anticipate over 175 construction jobs that will be necessitated as a result of the project. And there would be anticipated and estimated to be approximately 150 to 200 part-time and full-time jobs based on the retail space that will be created through the project. The project is zoning compliant with the Downtown Center One for Main Street as an urban renewal area. And the project approval will rest in terms of its design and its layout with you as the Riverhead Town Board. And hopefully, if you feel that what we have put forward to you is acceptable, will be ultimately approved by your board. The proposal also seeks and would require ownership by J. Petroselli Development Associates of par portions of the land upon which elements of the project would exist. But we will also be responsible for a term for the maintenance and ongoing care through a program for the town public space in the town square. But there is a component that is also required that the town would have to construct a parking garage that would be allowed for spaces that are being relocated to create greenway on the riverfront and yet placed in a place behind Main Street so that there would be direct access by walking from the parking garage to the new town square and areas on Main Street. There have been studies done via the town through Sam Schwartz, Transportation Consultant, which you adopted January 1 of 2020, that looked at parking and took a picture look in 2018. It has evolved. It said everything was fine then, but given the development that's been going on here in the town since then, it needs to have a further look, which we know you will address and take a look at. But this project is a combination and a joint effort between J. Petroselli Development Associates and the town. And there are elements that we, together with you, would have to work on and work towards completing in order for the project to go forward. There's grant monies available that the town has already started to apply for and seek to help with some of the components that are not part of J. Petroselli Development Associates. And there are grants that J. Petroselli Development Associates intend to apply for to also help fund and assist. There will be another element of this that will require and look at collaboration for the funding in terms of its development. And that would address the unique things that are being proposed in terms of activities at the site. So this morning, what I would like to do now is introduce Joseph Petroselli of J. Petroselli Development Associates, who will be the mover and shaker in moving this project forward and its construction, and has been working with the town team, with our team, to develop the project that you see before you today. It has been involving an ongoing change in design and thought and elements because as everybody came up with another suggestion or idea, whether it was from Barry Long or other members of the town team, we've tried to incorporate it. So at this point, I would like to close and let Mr. Petroselli come forward and explain to you where we're at.
Thank you, Mr. Russo.
And I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Joe?
Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Supervisor and board members. Thanks for considering us for this great endeavor here. Just a little history. I feel like I've been, I've been standing up here for many years, and we still have the same paint job. I mean, we need to update our room.
Could you do it for us?
We'll do it for you. That's part of it. That's part of this whole deal. So as Eric mentioned, it's been, it's been a long, it's been a long run, 22 years of investing in Riverhead. By the way, this is the only town my family has invested in is Riverhead. Feta, Patchogue, Port Jeff, but we put all our eggs here. And it's Easter, too. All our eggs are in one basket, right here. No pun. So originally, the urban project was to create a tourist generator in 2000, which Jim Bisson, myself, answered and rewarded. The studies at that time showed about 800,000 visitors would come. The first year went pretty well, but what we realized is that everybody who visited the aquarium walked out and went home. So the failure was, was anticipated. And that's why we added the hotel and different other structures to try to compensate, to keep the tourists coming. So with that, we've built the Preston House. We've built some, renovated some historical sites in town. And we've now here standing before you to continue this effort to activate the town. So our goal here is that, to create this destination. We have components. We have pieces of attractions. But without more of them, the destination won't be complete. So we need to have different attractions to fill the hotels, to fill the restaurants, to bring the community and to bring tourists as well. This plan that our team has assembled, and we've taken great care because it's a sensitive piece. And this board here, we waited, I've waited a long time to have a commitment of a board like yourselves and Supervisor since many Supervisors I've been through, at least, at least six or seven different Supervisors. With this team, I feel we're going to get it done. We'll finally get it done. So let's, let's continue with Andy. He's going to continue to tell you about our design. But our passion here is to, is to build something spectacular. And Andy will tell you all about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Madam Supervisor and members of the board. My name is Andrew Jambertone of Jambertone Associates Architects with offices at 62 Elm Street in Huntington. I'm here today representing J. Petroselli Development Associates. I'd like to start by applauding the board. It is very rare that I've found a board in any municipality on Long Island that is as progressive and forward-thinking as this board is, recognizing that attracting development is not just merely a matter of letting buildings be built, but in fact, providing the necessary infrastructure for those buildings to then be successful. And the premise that this board has adopted through not just this project, but the other projects they've embarked on, has, I feel, made Riverhead a success and is a benchmark of what many municipalities should follow. A brief note about who I am. I've been practicing architecture for over 30 years. My firm specializes in historically informed modern buildings. We have also executed many historic restoration and adaptive reuse projects, including the Preston House and Hotel, and Howell House right here in town, the North Fork Table Restaurant and Inn in Southold, the Summer Cottage and Carriage Shed at Comsett State Park, the restoration and renovation of the Forest Estate in Cold Spring Harbor and the Panfield Estate in Lloyd Harbor. Will we put the slides up? Go forward to page five. Yeah, that's all right. So in addition to those other projects, our building is a restored 1870s Victorian in Huntington Village that we take great pride in what we've done. Next image would be the site plan. Regarding this project, I was asked by Mrs. Petroselli to assist him in the design of the proposed Riverhead Town Square development project. My understanding of the primary goal of this project was to create both a visual as well as a physical connection between Main Street Riverhead and the riverfront in connection with the continued urban renewal and revitalization of downtown Riverhead. Additionally, to make better use of the spectacular and currently underutilized riverfront area behind shops along Main Street, which is currently primarily used for parking. This would be accomplished by the town's acquisition of three buildings along the south side of Main Street, which would be raised directly across from the Suffolk Theater. The resulting space would be developed as a combined public square and activities area, as well as a privately owned series of buildings, which would feature, as Mr. Russo stated, a hotel, retail space, community education spaces, and restaurants. The resulting design would have to speak to the historic character of Riverhead, the context of the Main Street corridor, as well as adhere to the design principles set forth in the downtown Riverhead pattern book. With that in mind, and after preliminary discussions with Barry Long of Urban Design Associates, Associates, as well as input from Dawn Thomas and other members of the town, we developed the site plan you see displayed on the screen. Recognizing that passing traffic might not respond to a simple void in the Main Street corridor, we felt it necessary to create a figurative as well as a physical pause along Main Street. Using the prominent Suffolk Theater as a key element in this moment, we connected via a pedestrian walkway the front entrance of the theater with the center line of the public square, which establishes a long axial view to the waterfront. As the theater is not quite perfectly situated opposite the square, we elected to use a non-directional change in pavement encompassed in oval apps of sorts. We further reinforced this moment by setting the taller buildings back from Main Street and limiting the entry buildings to the square to just one story in height. So whether you're driving down Main Street or walking along the sidewalk, you're surely to experience this gateway to the Riverhead waterfront. The 70-foot-wide square will be accessed from Main Street by traversing three 6-inch risers, or using one of the two accessible rampways on either side of the front entrance, directly below the ceremonial gateway sign. The goal was to elevate the square enough to provide protection from the eventual rise in water table without cutting off the view to the river itself. The square will be set at elevation 13.5, which puts it approximately a foot above the projected 100-year floodplain as dictated by study from the Army Corps of Engineers. The square is designed to accommodate a variety of activities and cultural events, everything from street fairs to weekend markets, art festivals, holiday celebrations, food kiosks and the like can be easily accommodated in this flexible and fluid design. The east side of the public square will be flanked by the hotel building. This building features first-floor retail for local boutiques, restaurants, and a 3,600 square-foot museum. The hotel lobby will be located at the south end of the square with a portico share-covered entrance off of Heidi Bear Way. The boutique hotel will feature some 80 guest rooms, as well as a lounge, bar, restaurant, gym, and rooftop pool deck and lounge. The hotel will be a total of four stories, and in accordance with the pattern book, will have an undulated facade as well as step macing with the upper floors stepped back from the floors below. On the west side of the square, there will be a two-story building abutting the Long Island Science Center, which will feature retail space on the first floor, as well as communal workspace on the second floor. The centerpiece of this building, however, will be a historically correct recreated facade of the Washington Engine Company Number Two Building, which was built in 1861. Behind this facade will be a free-to-the-public museum celebrating the proud tradition and heritage of the Volunteer Fire Department in Riverhead. At the southern end of the west side building will be a tower element, which provides not only vertical access to the second-floor office space in terms of a staircase and elevator, as well as ADA access to the adjacent public walkway behind the Long Island Science Center, but also provides public restrooms as well as an ATM. The public square, which is about 32,000 square feet, features a paved area flanked with trees and planters, fronting the retail space between the hotel and the west side building, upon which various events and fairs will take place. Centering the square and opposite the Firehouse Museum will be a fountain further celebrating the Riverhead waterfront. The south end of the square gives way to resplendent community green. This community green will provide various recreational activities, including human-sized checkers and chess on the lawn, bocce game tables under the shaded glade play space, as well as ample viewing opportunities to the riverfront, ADA walkways, and strolling paths. Along the west side of the community green will be a gently sloping lawn to bring you back down to grade, which will serve as an amphitheater for the numerous music festivals and performances to further enhance the community spirit interaction of this very special place. Finally, at the extreme south end of the community green, there will be a staircase descending to the riverfront promenade with a water feature. This will bring you to the boathouse on the river. The boathouse can provide rowboat, kayak, and paddleboard rentals, as well as space to house the skulls of local crew teams, and will serve as a ceremonial starting point for future regattas. Access will be provided to a second-floor viewing deck, providing a long view down the river to the bay. Continued revitalization of the riverfront area is anticipated, which will result in a 3/4 acre... You got the... There. Continued revitalization renewal of the riverfront is anticipated, which will result in a 3/4 acre public play area, which features a basketball court, sensory garden, cornhole boards, an Excelsior climbing structure, swings, slides, and other play equipment, a dedicated toddler play area, as well as a shaded baby play area. The surrounding lawn will feature benches, and along the riverside of Heidi Bear Way will be a designated bike path. To further encourage community investment by Riverhead youth and continued support for the riverfront, there will be a four-story condominium building, which will provide below-grade parking, a 5,000-square-foot community space, as well as uniquely designed condominium units able to be purchased, ranging from studio units to one- and two-bedroom units. The designs of the buildings themselves are intended to evoke imagery of historic Riverhead. The two entry buildings flanking the square entrance will be clad in cedar perfection shakes, feature an Italian eight-bracketed cornice, and windows which duplicate the two-over-two double-hung windows found throughout Riverhead. Rooftop terraces on both buildings will soften the facade with greenery and step back in accordance with the pattern book. Directly behind the east side entrances, we will feature a 3,600-square-foot museum space. The entrance to the square is celebrated by a gateway element proudly announcing entrance to this community square. The elevations of the storefronts along both the east and west side of the square are intended to create the imagery of strolling down historic Riverhead in terms of the scale of the storefront windows, undulating facade on the east side building, and colorful awnings to maintain a human scale along the square. The hotel will also feature the use of common local materials in terms of cladboard siding, cornerboards, a similar bracketed cornice, as well as a fenestration arrangement to replicate the typical second, third, and fourth-floor apartments found above so many shops in town. Anchoring each end of the hotel will be two tower elements, which pay homage to the original tower found in Grand Javel Park, once located at the far west side of the riverfront area. Stepping up into the square, you can really feel the activation of this area with the market kiosks, tree-lined walkway pass, providing opportunities for a never-ending range of community activities aimed at stimulating community spirit engagement. At the far end of the square, we can catch a glimpse of the boathouse in the distance, as well as appreciate the breadth of the square. In this view, we will see the view of the square from the waterfront, and you'll have a better appreciation of the community green space. We see the Washington Street Firehouse facade and a public museum centering the west side building. We can appreciate the second floor of this building stepping back to further enhance the human scale along the green. We see the tower element, which houses the public bathrooms, ATM, and vertical access. And off to the side, through a glade of trees, as folks enjoy a game of checkers or chess, we descend to the amphitheater. In terms of numbers, the hotel constitutes a footprint of 21,800 square feet, features 80 hotel rooms and approximately 6,500 square feet of retail space, a 3,600-square-foot museum, 3,850 square-foot hotel, restaurant, and some 11,000 square feet of combined rooftop terraces. The west side building constitutes some 6,650 square feet of retail space, 5,058 square feet of communal workspace, an 850-square-foot museum, and 1,100 square-foot rooftop terrace. The square constitutes some 32,000 square feet of combined green and paved space. The amphitheater, another 15,000 square feet of lawn, and the community youth area comprises some 30,000 square feet, nearly 3/4 of an acre, of green space. Thank you.
You had me at bocce.
Does that conclude the presentation?
At this time, we would ask that David Wortman, who is adjusting the SCRI, will come forward from VHB to address the other elements we wanted to discuss.
Yeah, and describe what, who is, for the public.
David Wortman is the... I'll let him...
Okay, I'll let him do it. Great. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Supervisor. Thank you, members of the board. My name is David Wortman. I am the Senior Environmental Manager for VHB Engineering.
David, excuse me, can you just bring the mic up so...
Yeah, no problem.
People...
Oh, does the mask, if you don't mind, that'll help? Okay, how's that coming through?
Much better.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
All right. Again, my name is David Wortman. I'm the Senior Environmental Manager for VHB. And we've had the good fortune of being invited to join this team in a few ways to assist a bit with the overall proposal and presentation, which will be submitted formally following today, but also to lend our expertise in the areas of things like traffic engineering and parking, other aspects including sewer, stormwater infrastructure, flood control, and this sort of a thing. And we'll have a chance to get further into the details of that should this board choose to select J. Petracelli Development as the master developer for the town square. We would further coordinate with some of the town's counterparts, who we've heard from today, Mr. Barry Long at UDA, Mr. Kevin Grims and NDC, and certainly the town's Community Development Director, Dawn Thomas, who's been great to date. And what we're looking to do, of course, is to build on that extensive background that the town has created and foundation for this project. We had also been involved with this application as it relates to potential funding opportunities, which I'll talk about in a moment, related to the town and flooding considerations. We've got, excuse me, here, we've got that background of the United States Army Corps study, which developed a clear picture of what the potential current and future issues are that face the area. But we've also had a chance to review some of the good work that's been done by the town and the folks at UDA in developing strategies for addressing those considerations. Some of the original concepts would be effective, but would have an unfortunate side effect of cutting off access to the river potentially, and this sort of a thing, and certainly that's not the intent. Other more creative strategies work with the landscape, maintain that connection to the river. And this plan that's been presented to you today is designed to do the latter. It incorporates protective measures into the structure of the development, gradually stepping it up as you move from the river toward Main Street until achieving an acceptable finished floor elevations for the square, for the hotel, and museum, and the other buildings that are included in the plan. Just very briefly with regard to funding, it's no surprise that the applicant is hoping to participate in the DRI, Downtown Revitalization Initiative Program, and will be submitting an application consistent with today's presentation. The DRI, as you're all well aware on the board, the Riverhead town was awarded $10 million as part of the fifth round of the state's DRI competitive application process. This town square project that the town's been working towards for so long was really a cornerstone of the town's winning proposal, and this master development proposal is fully compatible with that DRI vision and those goals, and would build upon those substantial previous planning efforts, as well as the public involvement and community support that was gained and accumulated throughout the recent history. The DRI funding is something that the project sponsor here will pursue directly and apply for in the coming several days. We're committed to the success of the riverfront and the overall downtown and connecting the town square successfully to the water and to Main Street. And to do that, this team will coordinate with the Community Development Director, your own board as the, and its other head, as the town's Community Development Agency, et cetera. But there are other available funding sources that we think really closely align with the goals for the project. And just to give as an example, the Suffolk County Department of Economic Development and Planning maintains a Jump Start Suffolk program, which is focused on promoting mixed use in these types of environments. This application doesn't get any more mixed use, I would say, between the hotel components, retail, and restaurant, and civic spaces, recreational opportunities, supportive residential component, as we heard a little bit about today. And that program's funded a range of downtown-oriented projects in Babylon, and Lindenhurst, and Port Jefferson, and some of the other villages and towns around Suffolk. We think this would be an excellent opportunity for that. And just some other examples, there's a Suffolk Downtown Revitalization Initiative of its own, and as well, the Raze Grant Program, which the town has previously applied for, and we understand is working diligently, even just yesterday submitting related paperwork for that grant. And again, these sorts of grant opportunities will really help not only make the overall project a reality, but will allow this developer to achieve some of the really special things that have been programmed into the space, as you've just heard from Mr. Jamberton regarding the recreational amenities, public green, the amenities that are within the square itself, the amphitheater that's shown and described. And we really look forward to participating with this project should you choose the master developer today. Thank you so much for your...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Supervisor, members of the board, we thank you for your time today. That would conclude our presentation, and we await and look forward to your decision. So again, have a happy Easter. If we don't speak to you before then...
Thank you.
Thank you. And a passover.
Excellent presentation by all. The renderings are wonderful. I can't even reimagine downtown after this happens, but I think you've hit every point from the pattern book onto even things that you can dream of. I can't think of a better team than what you've assembled here with Brian DeLuca and Steve Shogar, who've themselves been highlights of what downtown revitalization is. Mr. Petracelli himself, part of the Landmarks Preservation Committee, understands the way things downtown should look, and has proven so with all of his other prior projects. I think you have a great team here, and I really look forward to this happening.
Thank you.
I totally agree. You have an amazing team. Designs look good, and I wish you guys a lot of luck. And I think the team, the strength of this team, is really important for me to see.
It's a shame the camera can't pan and show everybody in the office who's part of this project and team, from our own town attorney's office, certainly to our CDA office and all its staff, as you mentioned, Brian and Steve, and certainly Mr. Petracelli. If you think back to 30-some-odd years ago, when Riverhead was really struggling downtown, and the major, not necessarily an economic generator, but a major part of the revitalization certainly was the aquarium coming into town, and then the addition of the Hyatt, and then the addition of the Preston House, and the Howell House. And I think anybody who has seen over the years the work that Mr. Petracelli has done, the money he has put into this town, he's been a huge part of the revitalization of the downtown of Riverhead. For this to proceed, and the drawings, the renderings are fantastic. This program to actually, it's going to come to fruition. This isn't like, go back 30, 35 years ago, and we had the same rendering, not the same renderings, but we had renderings up from Apollo, was a major developer that was going to come in and change the face of Riverhead. They never got off their feet. We had economic crisis in the meantime, I understand all that, but this is actually real. It's happening. The CDA, we bought the property. We demolished the buildings. We are now ready to take the next step. And with the people assembled in this room, I'm glad I live in Riverhead, because some people are going to want to move here, and they're not going to be able to get in. And you know what? We're going to have, we are... to have, we are going to be the town in Suffolk County. And this is just the start of many more good things to come with the team we've assembled. So, thank you so much. I appreciate everything you're doing, and I look forward to the shovel in the ground.
Thank you.
Well, I want to thank the team. We are about to enter into possibly a public-private partnership. That's what it's about. It's the new wave of building and working with municipalities. I mean, or with the renditions, obviously you put a lot of work. I was elated to see that Dawn, you reached out to a lot of people to make sure this was the right thing to do. You had NDC here, you had the attorneys check this out, yourself, you know, your office. And it's impressive what you presented today. And it's mind-boggling whoever developed the parking lot in front of a riverfront, and hopefully, we're going to use it. Cars should not have water views. People should have them. And that's what's going to happen now. So, I commend everyone. I'm going to ask the board if we should move forward a resolution for their consideration as John Petroselli as the master developer. Shall we move it forward?
Absolutely.
Yes, indeed.
Dawn, can you make sure it's prepared and forward it for consideration, please?
Yes, and we will do that. That would authorize our team here at Town Hall to negotiate with the developer to move the project forward, and subject to them being determined qualified and eligible for an urban renewal project at a future public hearing, obviously additional public engagement. And just to Tim's point relating to the old proposals, and I think what's different here, there's two things really in play. One is the public engagement piece, because that old project was not done with any public engagement.
It wasn't.
This entire development started with public engagement, listening to the town, what they wanted to hear, what they wanted to see, and how they envisioned downtown to be. And the second piece is the board, because this board is willing and able to engage with the developer, and I think the developers mentioned this. You know, it's not always the case, it's a bold decision, but I think through the entirety of the process, which has been very lengthy, you know, we realize that this is what we need to do. And so, I think those two things are really what makes this a success. And the consultants we have, Kevin and Barry, will help guide you all in making future decisions with Mr. Petroselli and his team. So, thank you very much for listening. Thank you to everybody who worked so hard to do this today. I really couldn't be more excited.
Great.
Thanks.
Fabulous job. Congratulations.
Just want to mention Assemblywoman Jody Iglio is here today also as part of this event. So, we know how much she cares about our town, and certainly she has an interest in this. So, thank you for coming, Assemblywoman.
Great. Thank you, Dawn. Next, I'm going to ask Eric Howard, our town attorney, to please introduce the next item. The next item concerns potential code changes to Chapter 289 regarding no parking on Sound Avenue and Cliff Road. Eric, good morning.
Good morning. The town square concept presentation is going to be a tough act to follow, but I think this is going to be just as exciting.
I think you're a wishful thinker.
Yeah, you sure are.
No.
I do not.
No.
Did you give that to Devin? Yeah, she's going to put it up on. Sometimes we put it up before you have it. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have this.
Now, now.
I'm confused because now I have one.
Which one do you have?
Whatever that goes with this.
That's interesting. This is the only town they invested in, you know?
What's that?
This is the only town he's invested in. I mean, he's built elsewhere by, it's the only town, at least their family funds to.
And look at the work he's done, and look at what it's done for our town.
I remember when the prairie was coming, and nobody thought, people were looking back. There was a lot of opposition to that.
Tim, I have a question for you, if I can. You brought up a good point last week, like there's going to be no parking signs all over Sound Avenue.
Well, we want to go to a public hearing on this, and we want to hear from the people, because part of what this might actually come to is just certain areas of Sound Avenue for no parking, not the entire, because it's really not necessary.
Especially around the farms.
That's my personal opinion. Right. So, I want to hear from the public on it. That's why we're doing this. And I want to hear from the chief also.
Okay, so we'll start with Cliff Road East. This is just a portion of Cliff Road. It's relatively small. This came as a recommendation from the chief. There has been an issue with a house down there that doesn't have its own independent driveway. And at certain points, it's been a rental property, and there's been some activity of it on Airbnb. And there've been cars basically parked at the terminus, which essentially blocks two houses with driveways right down at the terminus. So, what we're looking to do is prohibit the on-street parking on the north side there, and then on the terminus itself. And then with respect to the remaining portion of the southern, the south side of the street before you get to Dogwood, it's really only, could accommodate one or two cars, and really one car before the turn. And that parking there hasn't really been an issue. So, we just sort of limited it to the north side of the road and upon the terminus itself. And we think that'll alleviate some issues that that's presented to the residents down there at the end of the road. If the chief wants to elaborate on that.
Have they weighed in on this idea?
We did receive a letter that was submitted through the town clerk's office yesterday in support of it.
I'm not sure.
I don't know, I don't recall which homeowner it came from, but there's really, there's two homeowners right on the terminus that this primarily affects. And then I think one house down, and then one house on the south side of the street.
Okay.
But we've received a lot of complaints, mostly from one homeowner who's regularly been unable to get into their driveway or get out of their driveway because of parking right there at the end of the road. And I believe they're elderly, and there's been some concern about getting, you know, out in the event of, you know, some kind of emergency or something.
So, Eric, you're saying there's a house that doesn't have a driveway?
It doesn't, it doesn't really have a driveway. It has a sort of a walking path that goes up to it. And then I believe it's Horse Landing Road that goes down on the other side. And because of the elevation, and because of the elevation, they can't really build a driveway to get access from that road.
There's a lot of farms in between here, right? There's a few farms in between here.
On Cliff Road?
No. I thought you're talking about Cliff. I'm talking about Sound Avenue.
Okay, so the Sound Avenue proposal, this was something that was a public hearing back in August of 2019. And there was an effort towards the end of 2019 to move it to adoption. That was tabled to allow, because there was going to be an administration change, and they figured the new town board should review it, you know, before moving forward with an adoption. Since then, the prior public hearing that was held has gone stale. It's been too long. So, in order to consider it again, we need to put it up for a public hearing again.
I agree.
There was, there was a pretty robust discussion about the proposal back in 2019, when it was initially put up. But if you read through those minutes, at a certain point in the public hearing, sort of veered on to the issue of heavy traffic on Sound Avenue, and less focus on, you know, what the effect or benefit to prohibiting parking along the sides of the roads would be. So, I think it's ripe for continued discussion, particularly in light of the upcoming agro-tourism season. So, it'd be good to field some comments from the public and see what they think about it at this point.
Yeah, I want to hear from the public on this again. I know the farm community was initially not really happy with the idea because of some of their parking issues, but I know a lot of them, the Lewins, Harbs, even.
Briamere.
Yeah, Briamere made real concerted efforts to take the cars off the road, and they've adjusted in the wake of this being considered. So, but I would like to hear from the rest. I know there are problem areas up and down Sound Avenue. Toomey Avenue is one of them that really scares me, of course, from the Coop Ridge when they're having their autumn festival.
Right.
But they're all, and they're isolated to maybe only a couple of weeks, but I think that could really help to mitigate some people walking across Sound Avenue and really dangerous situations.
Yeah.
That's a bad intersection when you're trying to pull out onto Sound off of Toomey, and you've got cars on both sides there. So, I think, I don't, this, the resolution reads looking to shut down parking from end to end on Sound Avenue. I don't really favor that. I'm more interested in looking at certain areas that are a problem. And like Frank said, Lewin's put parking into their property now. So, that solved that problem. Briamere added more spaces, that solved that. Harbs is now parking a lot more cars on their property. But there are still a couple of areas that we need to look at, and I would recommend the board take a ride and just make mental notes as to what areas you think it might be that we have to look at. But I definitely want to hear from the farm community and from the public on it, so.
Okay, so we'll go forward to a public hearing with the idea that, you know, after receiving those comments, there'll be some further revisions to this, and maybe identifying certain zones that we would set up that would be parking prohibited, and leave the rest as is. Okay.
Yes.
Chief, what are your thoughts on it?
So, a lot of Sound Avenue is self-impending already.
Right.
As far as we never park, because a car there in first place, like a lot of places like farms and stuff like that, which I think was addressed, and I know lots of, all of this parking is on-site. But if it was Harbs now, I opposed the no parking by authority on the south side of Sound Avenue, because you have one car is parking, you're trying to drive for things around.
Manor, I see them, yeah. It actually says, by the chief of police, the order of the chief.
And honestly, that might be all we need to do.
Right.
Yeah. Right.
Okay.
Well, so, in conjunction with this proposed revision, there are areas of Sound Avenue that we currently have in our code that are identified as no parking. So, this would also, if a lot of those parking issues have been alleviated, then this could give us cause to review the code as to what we have in here in terms of parking prohibited already.
Correct.
And it's on the printout there. But for example, we have on the north side of Sound Avenue from Osborne Avenue westerly to Baywood Drive. So, I mean, this could be an opportunity to analyze whether that's still needed.
Yeah, the traffic from the cider house, and the bend in the road, very difficult to see pulling out. So, I think that's why we did that. I think that's got to stay. Yes. Right.
And like I said before, just pedestrians on Sound Avenue trying to cross is just a dangerous thing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's go to a public hearing, and.
And then with respect to Cliff Road, are we good to go to public hearing on that?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, next, where's Devin? Phil, you want to see where Devin is? We're going to move on to resolutions.
Phil, did you take a hip check into the boards last night on a hockey game, or? Whizzos. Whizzos. I had them here somewhere.
Okay, everybody ready? Resolution number one accepts the resignation of a part-time account clerk. Resolution number two authorizes the town clerk to publish and post notice to consider local law to amend Chapter 271 entitled Smoking of the Riverhead Town Code. Number three authorizes town clerk to publish and post notice to bidders for buses for summer recreation and teen camp trips. Number four, awards bid for charter buses. Number five approves Chapter 255 special event application for Pecanet County Brewing PCB Fest September 10, 2022. Number six appoints a temporary office assistant to the tax receiver's office. Number seven authorizes the supervisor to execute an agreement with the Riverhead Business Improvement District Management Association, Inc., regarding 2022 calendar year events and services, nug pro tunk. Number eight appoints a building permits examiner. Number nine accepts the resignation of a part-time driver messenger. Number 10 authorizes the town clerk to publish and post notice to bidders for rebid for fertilizer and lawn chemicals. Number 11 appoints a call-in recreation aide to the recreation department. Number 12 approves special event application for waiting rivershore and Chamber of Commerce Duck Pond Day. Number 13 approves special event Chapter 255 application for Long Island Anti-Power Association tractor and truck pulls and big rig shows. Number 14 appoints new seasonal beach personnel to the recreation department. Number 15 appoints returning seasonal beach and park personnel to the recreation department. Number 16 authorizes the town clerk to publish and post notice to bidders for annual fire and security alarm contract. Number 17 rejects bids for fertilizer and lawn chemicals. Number 18 awards bid for dry hydrated lime calcium hydroxide. Number 19 approves special event Chapter 255 application for Race Awesome, 7th Annual Jamesport Triathlon. Number 20 approves special event Chapter 255 application for NFDSNY Latin Music Festival. Number 21 approves special event Chapter 255 application for Pecanet Bay Medical Center, Pecanet Bay Medical Center Northwell Health Walk at East End. Number 22 retirement of a police officer. Number 23 approves special event Chapter 255 application of Pecanet County Brewing Dad Bod 5K.
I'm the poster child for that event.
Number 24 authorizes the supervisor to issue a letter to the Suffolk County Department of Health Services allowing the use of Pine Barrens credits originated from property located in Riverhead Crest LLC. Number 25 authorizes supervisor to execute agreement with Cummings, Inc., regarding generator service and maintenance at facilities of the Riverhead Water District. Number 26 accepts the resignation of a water treatment plant operator 2B. Number 27 North Point Development Project Number 82205 budget adoption. Number 28 retains Sam Schwartz as consultant to the planning board, OSTAD subdivision. Number 29 ratifies the rescinding of Resolution Number 2022-280 and cancels the public hearing to consider a local law to amend Chapter 271 entitled Smoking of the Riverhead Town Code. Number 30 authorizes the town clerk to re-advertise notice to bidders for sporting goods. Number 31 authorize the supervisor to execute change order number one well-held treatment for removal of manganese at Plant Number 5, Contract P, Plumbing Construction, Riverhead Water District. Number 32 sets new public hearing for the special permit application of 265 Washington Avenue, 265 Washington Avenue, South Jamesport, New York, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 600-68-3-26.
That's the sourdough bread people?
Correct. Number 33 authorizes notice of public hearing to establish fair and reasonable sewer rent for out-of-town facilities for calendar year 2022.
$100,000 a gallon to the Suffolk County Jail.
That'll do it.
I would like that.
Yep. And number 34 grants extension of special permit for the application known as 48 Cromer LLC for a proposed liquid propane storage and distribution facility and industrial facility with accessory office located at 48 Cromer Avenue, Riverhead, New York, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 600-119-1-32.1. Number 35 authorizes town clerk to publish and post notice to consider a local law to amend Chapter 289 of the Riverhead Town Code entitled "Vehicles, Traffic, and Parking Regulations: Weight Limits." Number 36 appoints a deputy town attorney. And number 37 appoints a network and systems specialist one.
Eric, this resolution on the appointment of the deputy?
Yes.
We need the conditions updated, so.
Yeah, there's still the one outstanding. There's still the one outstanding issue, just on the terms and conditions.
Yeah, but they should go together, so.
Oh, they will, yes.
All right, so, have it catch up?
Yes.
So, this, if not, we'll have to wait. So, maybe, we're going to vote on it on Tuesday, right?
Yes.
If we can have it together, because then we're not going to move forward. We should have it together.
It'll be together.
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
I had one other resolution that came into my attention this morning. We previously held a public hearing for Mike Zaleski to have that salary increase related to his duties for the municipal garage. That public hearing was held on February 15, and the open comment period has long since passed. And so, I was hoping that we could advance a resolution to go ahead and adopt that, so that he could.
That's fine.
Okay.
Fine with me.
Okay.
So, Devin, when you see it, move it forward, please.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Before I close this work session, for those celebrating Passover, which begins tomorrow, we want to wish you and your family a happy Passover. And for those celebrating the holy month of Ramadan, blessings to you and your family. And I also want to give a shout out to, this week is National Dispatchers Week. And I just want to take a moment to recognize our dispatchers and thank them for their outstanding work and their dedication in a job that sometimes can be very stressful. And thank you very much for your service, and be safe. And I just want to remind everyone, town hall is closed tomorrow, Friday, April 15, tax day. In celebration of Easter, on behalf of myself and the entire town board, I want to wish all of you, all our employers, all our residents, all our visitors to the town of Riverhead, have a happy Easter, and please be safe.
Happy Easter.
Happy holidays to everybody.
Can I have a first and a second to close this work session, please? You're the first, you're the second. So moved.
I, I, I.
Thank you again, and be safe.